Documents and then visit the physical back to you with the one you have reset some backup documents to go with that so they can see how this calculated.
Our next step is, is there are places in the budget where we can make adjustments to make that all fit together? And that's happening sort of in real time. So they did not get that part yet. They did get the other part. They will get that, but they didn't get it as of, you know, right now because we're still updating that part of it.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? I see none. Seeing none, is there a motion to approve CTA contracts?
I make a motion to approve the CTA contract.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed?
I oppose.
My too.
Motion passes five to two. Next item on the agenda is approval of SRP contract for discussion and votes. Anything to add, Mr. Coward regarding SRP contract, or I think we covered?
I think I covered it.
Any questions or comments from the committee on the SRP contract? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the SRP contract?
Motion to approve the SRP contract.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Next item on the agenda is the Girls on the Run presentation for discussion.
So as they make their way up, um, this is a great group to be followed to follow me because this is so much lighter and and fun. Um, so you know, we have a lot of great things going on our schools. We've had, uh, you know, different kids at different meetings to talk about, you know, healthy food challenges and, you know, menu design and things like that. And so Western has had this Girls on the Run program for a little while. And Tricia Hunt, who is a parent and educator in the district, had reached out to me and said that, you know, she really loved it. Her kids loved it. The, uh, in talking to, you know, the principal and other people, it just seems to be like a nice, successful program. And so we thought it would be great for them just to do a little presentation of what they did. And, and then maybe there's an opportunity for some of our other elementary schools to, um, pick this up and spread it out.
Great. Thank you. So my name is Tricia Hunn, as Mr. Cowart said, and sorry, come close. Is that better? Okay, sorry. Tricia Hunn, I am a parent and a teacher at Ty Oak Elementary School. And like Mr. Cowart said, my daughter, Mary Jane, um, she completed the Girls on the Run program this year and every Tuesday and Thursday that she came home spilling her guts about all the amazing things that she was doing. And then participating in the end of your 5K with her, I just knew I had to shout it out in a much bigger way than just my family and friends because it was absolutely incredible. So I'm very thankful to the committee for letting me and Ms. Reese, who is one of the coaches, kind of tell you a little bit more about it. I'm ready for the next. Yeah. So first and foremost, we wanted to say thank you to the three coaches that you can see on our screen. Mrs. Hayes is Western's phys ed teacher and health teacher. She couldn't, uh, attend tonight. Mrs. Branch is a fifth grade teacher and another coach, and I'll let her introduce herself.
Hi, I'm Miss Reese. I'm the special education teacher at Western.
And then we also want to make sure we shout out Dr. Bagley because she may not have been at every single practice, but she was there at the 5K and I know that her support was really important to all the girls who ran, and I'm sure the coaches as well. So just to give you some background about Girls on the Run, it was founded in 1996. It's a nonprofit organization and right now it's all across North America. It serves more than 2 million girls. Um, it is enjoyable. It's evidence-based activities that are designed to empower girls by helping them in four key areas. Um, it's kind of hard to sum them up, but basically it's recognizing their inner strength, boosting their physical activity levels, envision, envisioning their future possibilities and confidently learning how to advocate for themselves and for others. So Ms. Reese and I are, and Mary Jane are all going to kind of share teaching you a little bit about the lessons that the girls learned throughout the program.
Perfect. So one aspect of this program is about the physical activity. Um, so every practice, um, before we went out to go run, we had the girls set, um, some lap goals. So how many laps they thought they could achieve during our allotted time period. Um, so just achieving those lap goals, even the small ones, um, contributes to a sense of accomplishment. Um, and helps to boost self-esteem.
Um, I liked in that lesson that I could set a goal that was perfect for me and then also achieve it at the same time.
All right. Um, and these do not, this isn't the only thing they did. These are just like small snippets. So for managing emotions, some of the strategies that Mary Jane came home talking about was like a five finger breathing where they stop, breathe, think, respond and review. And the strategy allows girls to press pause on some strong emotions that they're feeling and think through the choices that they have for responding to the situation that may have caused that emotion.
Another strategy I learned, um, is at Girls on the Run was using my five senses to control myself in tough situations.
This program is also really great for fostering friendships. So the program creates a safe and inclusive space where girls can interact, um, build connections and learn to cooperate. Um, so the students participate twice a week, um, with peers from three different grade levels, which gives them the opportunity to form friendships with other kids that they might not usually interact with.
Um, I like that I could meet new people from different grades and get to know them more and even make some new friends too.
Okay. And the last one is expressing empathy. Um, so girls learn to listen actively, respect different perspectives and support their teammates. And obviously that's a core aspect of practicing empathy through group discussions, games and partners activities. The girls were encouraging, were being encouraged to put themselves in other shoes. Um, and the program really emphasized, which is what I heard from, from Mary Jane, that it really emphasized encouragement over competition, helping the girls to just build each other up and understand how their words and their actions affect each other.
In this lesson, I learned that everyone has some hard feelings sometimes, and now I think I'm more aware and that I can help them makes me feel great.
And here are just some pictures that Ms. Reese was able to share of, you can see the girls like on both sides. They're participating in physical activities, but that all, it's not just a physical activity, right? There's so many different things layered into each activity that is very purposely prescribed through Girls on the Run. So it all ends with the celebratory 5K and this is where I really got to come in and every kid, part of when you sign your child up for Girls on the Run, you promise that you'll have an adult run or walk with them for the end of season 5K. It provides all the program participants with, of all skill levels, with a real sense of achievement. When they cross that finish line, it really almost makes me emotional remembering what it felt like for her and for myself to do it with her. It fosters confidence. It creates this joyful memory that I know I wasn't the only one cherishing. You could feel the energy at that 5K. Um, every individual in the program is awarded a commemorative 5K medal that Mary Jane's going to come show you. And it is just truly like a very festive celebration. There's music, there's vendors, girls are, you know, making their hair special. Some girls have tutus. It's just really, really fun.
Um, the thing I liked about the 5K was at first I felt it was going to be very hard, but once I did it, I felt accomplished and now I could do very hard things.
Great. And then that's their, um, they had like, again, it was just a whole celebration. When you went there, they had selfie stations and then that's a picture of Western's team with their coaches. And just thank you very, very much for letting us come tell you all about it.
Thank you so much for the presentation. Don't go anywhere. There might be questions.
Oh, question.
Yeah.
Questions, comments, members of the committee, member Jack Foney had her hand up first.
I'm not sure if you said it at the beginning, but how many girls participate in this program?
Um, so it depends on how many coaches there are, but we had about, um, 18 girls.
Good, yeah.
Member Carla.
Um, can you bring this to the middle school, please?
So they do have, um, Girls on the Run has a separate program for the middle school. Um, it's called something different. Yeah, Heart and Soul, that's right. Um, it's up to the middle school. Anyone can start it. So it doesn't have to be a teacher either. Parents can run this. Um, they get their training, um, through the program. So.
So yours is just based elementary?
Correct.
Okay.
So if I could piggyback on that, only because after I left that race, I immediately said, I want to take this to the school that I currently teach at, which is Ty Oak Elementary School. And so all summer I've been going through the training to understand it. And there is separate programs for the middle school versus the elementary level. But I was very happy to see that it really can be started by anybody in the community. It doesn't have to be started by a, a teacher of that school. So if it's something that you're interested in bringing to the middle school, really it just takes, um, adults that have time and care, that they are passionate about it. The training, it's really, really special, but there is some time to it. And it's helping me to understand that it wasn't just magical at Western because like those teachers are amazing, but the program itself is what really makes sure that every girl who participates has a worthwhile experience.
Yeah, the transition from fifth grade to sixth grade, for girls especially, I feel like is really, really hard. And to get them to meet all those goals, I think would be super special. So maybe I'll connect with you.
Yeah, the curriculum is different for the elementary and the middle school because, um, the coaches are provided with a curriculum book because the first part is about, you know, like bettering mental health and social emotional aspects. And then there is the physical running part of it. Um, so just that uh, curriculum is different for the different grade levels.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? I see, um, member Adele.
This will be real quick. This was a beautiful presentation and this is awesome. And, um, this is maybe a joke, but would you be able to try to teach boys empathy as well? Like fill it, fit that in somehow?
Sure. You'd have to take that up with the, the program director of that, but I would be more than willing to coach the boys.
Any other comments or questions? Member Mayor.
Thank you for your work with this. And it looks like a great program and I'm glad to see that it's going to start expanding among the elementary schools. Great job.
And I'll just echo the same. Thank you very much for your time in, in running this program. And it's nice, uh, agree. It's nice to see it start spreading to other schools and, and hopefully maybe even middle school at some point. So thank you very much. And, and thank you for the wonderful presentation.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the Coventry High School tour, which will not be broadcast on Zoom for the folks on Zoom, uh, for discussion.
So before, before we head out, um, and it, it won't be as long as some of the tours we've had in some of the other schools because we're not touring the entire building, uh, which is definitely not something you want to do in the summer anyways, because a lot of the rooms are emptied out into the hallways. But, uh, two projects that we've spoken about a few times that are moving along, and I wanted the school committee and, and whoever wants to walk with us to have an opportunity to see is we're working on the, the gymnasium and we are working on the science labs. And, uh, we've had some pictures of the gymnasium posted a little bit from athletics, but I think seeing it in person is, is significant. Uh, science labs have not been, uh, shared as often. Uh, we, we did a lot of work to, to prepare for the work to get started. And what I mean by that is when we first went into those rooms and started, uh, the demolition of furniture and casing and everything else, took everything off the walls, we realized that the rooms had to be painted. It, there was really no option. You know, you can't do the kind of uh, renovation that we're doing and not paint the rooms. And so Russ's team paint, you know, for the last like three or four weeks have been painting. And I, Russ, is it 13 rooms or 13 rooms? So, um, there's been a lot of painting going on, but I think there are some rooms, if they're not completely set up, they're close to setup. I think close enough to give you an idea of what they're going to look like. Uh, so Russ will kind of lead the way. Um, our athletic director is also here, Joe Fognoli. He's been very involved in the planning and, um, monitoring of the, uh, improvements in the gym. So he'll hopefully be around for the tour. And if anybody has any questions, he'll, he'll, uh, answer those. So Russ, you're going to lead the way so that nobody gets lost in the building. Do we need to give you a sign that says like tour guide? All right. So follow Russ and it's every man for themselves. So if you get lost. And it's every man for themselves. So if you get lost.
So I'd like to reconvene at the table here. There may have been a couple of questions. Or does anyone on the school committee have any questions about the tour? Remember those race cut out.
Just a quick question. Why did we do the floors before the lift? Is it because we needed to do the electrical and?
It was actually a supply chain issue. So we had ordered the lights. And the intent was the lights to be going in before or either during the floor installation, like working around each other. But the lights didn't come in. And we didn't want to stop progress because we're on a timeline. So the fixtures were all put in place. Everything that not fixtures, like the outlets, you know, all the wiring, everything's up there. We just need to put the fixtures in place. And so they weren't in. So we just, you know, kept progressing along. And now we just have to circle back and install them.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, we can move on to the next agenda item, which is vote to go into executive session. Is there a motion to recess into executive session at seven o'clock?
Make a motion that the committee recess into executive session at seven o'clock to consider matters specifically relating to student matters. R I G L forty-two, forty-six, five, eight, eight, homeschool requests and approval of executive session minutes from June twelfth, two thousand twenty-five, where the following items are discussed. Student matters, R I G L forty-two, forty-six, five, eight, eight, homeschool requests, approval of executive session minutes from May twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five, approval of executive session minutes from June third, twenty twenty-five, superintendent valuation, R I G L forty-two, forty-six, five, A one, discussion of superintendent's contract, R I G L forty-two, forty-six, five, A one, in discussion.
Chair second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero.
Okay, we just wrapped up the Coventry High School tour, so I'd like to reconvene at the table here. There may have been a couple of questions, or does anyone on the school committee have any questions about the tour? Member Dos Reis Cuto.
Just a quick question, why did we do the floors before the lift? Is it because we needed to do the electrical and?
It was actually a supply chain issue, so we had ordered the lights. And the intent was the lights to be going in before or either during the floor insulation, like working around each other. But the lights didn't come in, and we didn't want to stop progress because we're on a timeline, so. The fixtures were all put in place, everything that, not fixtures, like the outlets, you know, all the wiring, everything's up there. We just need to put the fixtures in place, and so they weren't in, so we just, you know, kept progressing along, and now we just have to circle back and install them.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, we can move on to the next agenda item. Which is vote to go into executive session. Is there a motion to recess into executive session at seven o'clock?
Make a motion that the committee recess into executive session at seven o'clock to consider matters specifically relating to student matters, RIGL forty-two, forty-six, five, eight, eight, homeschool requests. And approval of executive session minutes from June twelfth, two thousand twenty-five, where the following items are discussed, student matters, RIGL forty-two, forty-six, five, eight, eight, homeschool requests. Approval of executive session minutes from May twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five, approval of executive session minutes from June third, twenty, twenty-five. Superintendent valuation, RIGL forty-two, forty-six, five, A one, discussion of superintendent's contract, RIGL forty-two, forty-six, five, A one, in discussion.
Chair second.
Second.
All in favor? Chair votes aye, any opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Seven eleven P M. During executive session, two votes were taken, the first to approve homeschool requests, the second to approve executive session minutes of June twelfth. Both votes passed unanimously. Is there a motion to seal the records of executive session?
Make a motion that the records of the executive session be kept closed pursuant to sections forty-two, forty-six, four, and forty-two, forty-six, five.
All in favor? Chair votes aye, any opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Next item is approval of minutes for June twelfth, two thousand twenty-five, and June sixteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Any questions on the minutes? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of June twelfth, twenty twenty-five, and June sixteen, twenty twenty-five as presented.
Chair second. Second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Chair votes aye, any opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Next item is introduction of Kerry Litschka, principal at Tyog Elementary, for discussion.
Yeah, so I'm really happy and excited to introduce Kerry, so um, a little bit about her, and there's, there's a lot of people in this room that know a lot more than I do. Um, I've been here about twelve districts, twelve years, and as long as I've been in the district, I've heard about Kerry. Even back when I was a principal of Washington Oak, and Amy was the principal at Western, he would, she would talk about Kerry and how wonderful Kerry was, and I even remember one of my first. Meetings as director of curriculum, she had gotten, it was like an environmental recognition for work that she had done in her class, so Kerry has been sort of a cutting-edge person. For quite a few years. The other thing interesting about Kerry is she's had the opportunity to work in a few different grades and a few different schools and has had a really. Vast experience as, as an educator, as an instructor, and so I think that's also something that's special about her. She hasn't been in the same grade in the same building for twenty-five years. She's, she's done a lot. Recently, she's been spending time working with Amy in our central office on curriculum and instruction as a coach and working with. A lot of the implementation work that's necessary. She's been part of presentations that you guys have seen in terms of getting curriculum approved. The, the website that we have that our teachers use as a resource, she was part of, you know, building that, she's helped vet. A number of the different programs we've brought into the district to help improve how we track data and how we use data to make decisions. And how we, you know, support our students and our teachers. Kerry is also a little bit of an overachiever because. Besides doing all of that, she decided to get her master's degree and then get certified through CLE as an administrator, like all at the exact same time. And so I don't know how she did it, but she did it, and so this year we had a vacancy at Tyog and Kerry. Applied, she was an outstanding candidate, she did a wonderful job with the interview, the interview team unanimously selected Kerry, so I'm, I'm happy, I'm. Pleased, I'm excited to welcome and introduce Kerry Litschka to the committee, to the community, and obviously if you have any questions for her, you know, she'll. Do the best she can to answer them from the hot seat, and, and so Kerry, thank you, and welcome to Coventry as a principal of Tyog School, thank you.
Like to come up to the podium, we'll, we'll put you in that hot seat right now.
I'm in the hot seat now.
So congratulations, and at this time, we will take any questions or comments from members of the committee. Member Dos Reis Cuto.
No questions, but welcome, so happy that you will be the principal, and I look forward to great successes.
Thank you.
Member Mayor.
Uh, no questions, but again, welcome and congratulations.
Thank you.
Member Carlo.
Um, just want to say congratulations, Tyog was my elementary school, so I really wish you all the best. It's a special place in my heart, so take good care of it.
I will.
Member Jack Booney.
Well, everybody, congratulations and best of luck to you.
Thank you.
And I will say congratulations also, I will ask a question, since I'm the terrible person that puts you on the spot. Simple question, what are you looking forward to most about becoming a principal of elementary?
Oh my goodness, um, one of the things that I've missed being in the role that I'm in at central office. What the cool part about my role was it expanded my knowledge of the district and teachers in every building I got to work with and meet. And it was like an incredible experience, but what I missed the most was the feeling of home and community and children. Um, and so I'm looking forward to getting back into a school, having my own community, my own family, um, and little kids every single day.
Great answer, great answer. Is there anything you'd like to say beyond that?
Um, well, I prepared a little something. I just want to say, um, thank you all for the warm welcome, I'm incredibly honored and humbled to step into the role of principal. Um, at Tyog Elementary School. I just wanted to take a moment first, as Dawn said, it was a lot of work. So I need to take a moment to thank my family for their unwavering love and support. They've stood by me through every step of this journey. Um, and I wouldn't be here without them. Um, so the truth is, I never knew I always wanted this. Um, as an educator for twenty years, I never imagined stepping away from the classroom. I truly just loved being an educator, I loved being with kids every single day. Um, so I didn't ever envision this for myself, I always thought I'd be in the classroom. Um, but as I took on new roles, embraced new challenges, and worked alongside incredible educators in this district. I discovered a deeper calling to lead, to support, and to create conditions for others to thrive. Becoming a principal felt like the natural next step for me, it was definitely the culmination of years of hard work, reflection and growth. Um, and I'm ready and I'm honored to take it on. Um, I believe deeply in the power of public education, and I'm committed to creating a school culture. Where every student is known, valued and supported. At Tyog, I will work tirelessly to support our amazing teachers. Um, and staff, um, to build strong relationship with our families and our students. Um, I want to make sure our students thrive academically, socially and emotionally. So I'm super excited to lead with heart, with purpose, and a deep commitment to our school community, so thank you again for this incredible opportunity, I'm super excited.
Thank you very much. I also want to acknowledge, not only is Kerry's family here, but a lot of the Tyog staff is here as well to support her, so it shows the impact she's had in a very short amount of time.
Terrific, thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is the introduction of Jeff Guo as principal of Allen Sean Feinstein Middle School for discussion.
So, um, you know, we, we did some moves this year, we moved some principals and administrators around into different positions, and we had to. Uh, go on a search for what would be the next principal of Allen Sean Feinstein Middle School. We had really high standards, we had high hopes, we had a list of qualifications and qualities that we wanted. We posted the job, we interviewed the job, we posted the job again, we interviewed again, because we were really determined to make sure we got the right person. We had a lot of applicants, you know, we interviewed a number of people, and then suddenly sort of like out of nowhere, Jeff's name appeared in school spring unexpectedly. Uh, we were constant, Amy and I were constantly checking school spring almost on a daily basis to look for like that right fit. You know, there's a lot of people that had qualifications that we thought were worthy, but we were looking for somebody whose. Resume and experience and, and knowledge just seemed to be exactly what we were looking for, and so when Jeff's application hit. Uh, Amy and I started buzzing a little bit about, oh, wait a minute here, we, there's somebody here that, you know, really does, does exactly, has exactly what we're looking for. And I don't remember the timeline, but I want to say Jeff probably applied and was in my office for a first interview within a number of, you know, felt like hours, but it was probably a day or two. And Jeff came in, we pulled the interview team together, Jeff came in, had a solid interview. Uh, we, you know, debriefed afterwards, we knew immediately we wanted to have another conversation with Jeff, so we had him in again and had a second interview. And then we had him in for a third time to talk to him further about sort of his vision and his goals and the things that he is looking to do. Um, a little bit about Jeff, he is actually a Coventry resident, uh, his kids go to Coventry Schools. He has been here for a number of years and has the experience as a parent. Uh, watching his kids go all the way from elementary up through high school, I think you have a current twelfth grader, I think you have. He was an educator in Cranston as a teacher, a math teacher, he was an administrator in West Wallbrook, he was an administrator in Windsocket, he was a central office administrator in Killingly, Connecticut. He's, uh, worked at the middle school level, he's worked at the high school level, he's worked at the central office level. So there's a lot of things that Jeff has that kind of match what we're looking for, and so we were excited that when we made an offer to Jeff that we were able. Quickly secure him as our next principal of Allen Sean Feinstein Middle School, so I just want to introduce him. You know, he probably was listening to Kerry's speech and thinking to himself, Dawn didn't tell me I should write a speech, so now he has to figure out. How he matches Kerry's speech, so, um, Jeff, welcome to, welcome to Coventry, uh, welcome to Feinstein, and come on up.
Good evening, everyone. Yes, exactly.
We'll do it in reverse order, so I'm going to put you on the spot, uh, would you like, is there anything you'd like to say before you?
Well, um, I could just say ditto. No, I, um, you know, after twenty-three years in a lot of different roles, um, it was time to come home. And while I loved every minute of every other experience and central office. As Kerry said, um, I knew that I was going to miss the kids, and that was really the driving force behind. Um, making this decision and leaving central office and, and coming back as the middle school principal. Yes, I did sit here the entire time thinking, yep, I don't have a speech prepared, maybe I should just sneak out the back now. Um, but I'll make it up to you later, um, I promise to give you my all every day. Um, I want to lead a school that believes in itself, its staff believes in itself, which I know it already does, but we're going to deliver a top-quality education to every student that walks through that door every day. I want them to come to school every day, happy every day, and we will support them to do the best they can every day, and that includes one of the hardest working staffs. We're going to get better, we're going to figure out what we do really well, celebrate what we do really well. We're going to get better. We're going to figure out what we do really well, celebrate what we do really well and continue to work on the things that we need to work on. So, um, words don't accurately describe how excited I am for the opportunity. Thank you to Mr. Cowart and, um, Mrs. Anzaloni and everyone else. But it's time to come home. So I'm excited to get to work. So thank you very much for the opportunity. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Great, great speech for off the cuff. That was good. Any comments or questions from members of the committee? Member Jack Boni.
Just want to wish you the best of luck and congratulations.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Member Carlo.
Um, my daughter is in the middle school, um, and I love the middle school. I really think it's a great place for kids. It was a little rough going from five to six, especially with a little girl. Um, but I welcome you and it's going to be a challenge, but I think you're up to the task. So I wish you the best.
I have a daughter that's, um, also going into seventh grade that may or may not be in the back. She's going to be upset that I said that, but I, I understand and I'm, uh, I'm, I promise you that I'm up for the challenge. You won't be disappointed.
Okay, good.
Member Dos Res Cuto.
All you've said at all and everybody else has answered the question. So just welcome. I'm glad to have you and I look forward to successes and overcoming a lot of the challenges that you'll face.
Thank you for your kind words.
Member Mayor.
Congratulations and, uh, welcome back to Coventry. And, uh, I also have, I have two students at the middle school this year. My daughter's going into sixth, my son will be in eighth. So hopefully I don't hear from you too much.
Remember Dos Res Cuto again?
Oh yeah, I have two as well at the middle school, grandkids.
Any other comments or questions? Member Ride L.
Well, I just need to say I don't have an eye on you like they do. I don't have any kids in the middle school. But, uh, good luck and congratulations. Thank you very much.
I'll echo that comment. My children are long past middle school stage, so, um, I don't miss going there for office visits, but it's, it's a great school. It's a big school, great community. A lot of people work very hard there and it, and they do care about the students. So I'm glad you're taking the helm and, uh, I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Uh, just, just one thing to add. One of the ringing, ringing endorsements that, um, you know, really kind of sat with us a lot was, uh, Mrs. Maycomber was part of the interview and, um, really, really was excited about Jeff coming on board. She felt that they, she could see them having a strong relationship with each other and an opportunity to strengthening the connection between the middle school and the high school so that, you know, we prepare our kids at the middle school level for a seamless transition to the high school. So, uh, Mrs. Maycomber was part of that, uh, process. And so we were, we were definitely looking for the right principal for the middle school, but we're also looking for the right principal for the district because the middle school sits right in the middle of that, you know, 12 to 13 year span and, 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 and it, it makes that three-year period of time really crucial in terms of, you know, the success of our kids moving up, but also their transition into our high school. And the more that, you know, feel successful and happy within middle school experience, hopefully the more will stay in Coventry and attend, you know, Coventry High School and, you know, benefit from things like the science lab and the gym and all the other things we're going to do. So, uh, I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you. And tonight you can introduce yourself to Mrs. Leczka because you're going to need that same kind of relationship for the transition from elementary into middle school.
100%.
As member Carlo pointed out, is, is a, can be a challenge for boys and girls. Thank you again.
Thank you.
And you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but you don't have to. That's what, uh, my predecessor used to say. But we'd like you to stay. Next item on the agenda is the 2025, 2026 superintendent goals presentation for discussion.
Uh, I'm going to keep this relatively brief because I don't think there should be really any surprises in what I have shared with you folks. So, you know, this year I went through my evaluation process with the committee. Uh, I shared my goals and my reflection from 2425. I use that reflection and my evaluation to create new goals for, uh, 25 and 26. And so with all that feedback and all the reflection of, uh, what I, uh, you know, shared with you folks, I came up with the goals that I have here, uh, before you. So the first goal is just about strengthening two-way community engagement and visibility. It has a lot to do with some of the feedback I got in terms of really trying to, uh, you know, strengthen the, um, engagement with the community to uh, build trust, to get involved, to have a stakeholder participation and to, you know, definitely make it so that not only the superintendent, but the school is more visible. And, um, we're also going to continue to focus on building out better parent communication. Um, as, uh, noted in a few different conversations. So then there's some objectives. Expand district-wide storytelling through digital and social platforms. Talk about creating feedback loops where we either have town halls or surveys or focus groups where people can meet and have conversations. We also talked about, uh, you know, digital campaign helping to focus and refocus on our CTE students and our programs and showcasing our schools so that we can, you know, continue to promote the great things in Coventry. And then I just have some indicators for success, which is community engagement, uh, greater awareness about district offerings and then just improving, uh, the perception of transparency. My second goal was about building leadership capacity and celebrating excellence. Uh, the rationale has to do with, you know, a consistent theme across all my documentations. All of my documentation was, uh, needed to, uh, dampen, deepen internal recognition, promote wellness and support our leadership pipeline. Actually Kerry, I know she just left, but Kerry is a perfect example of our leadership pipeline. She's somebody who went from the classroom to a coordinator position to now a principal position. And that was, that was something that we nurtured and promoted. And we have a few other people who, uh, fit the same, uh, category. Nikki Shib at the middle school was the same thing. Uh, we also have Courtney Macropolis who's gone through the same process. So we have a number of people that we're, we're grooming to be our future leaders. And then I just have, you know, the objectives and the indicators for success. My third goal has to do with refining, um, our systems and for instruction and fiscal excellence. Uh, you know, this is pretty self-explanatory, but obviously we're in a deficit. Obviously it's important for us to pay it down. But also we need to maintain a high-quality instructional and academic experience for our students. So, uh, what we've been doing at the central office level is challenging each director of each department to think of ways to improve the systems within their department so that we have, uh, really good predictable methods of how things get done here. And if there's a problem or a breakdown somewhere along the line, it can be addressed. One of the things we do in this year to kind of push that out even further is I've been meeting with the district administrators one of the time. And one of the things I've talked about is not just now, this, this year's sort of like new element is, you know, number one, make sure it's measurable. But number two, let's make sure that when we think about sustaining new systems, that it's not just within one department, but that we are, you know, uh, working as a interdisciplinary approach and, and having, um, conversations across departments so that initiatives are more overlap. Talk about some objectives of how we will, uh, you know, get that goal done. And, uh, we already started the administrator evaluation process and we are also working on, uh, deepening our, uh, medication, Medicaid reimbursement, and then obviously trying to build out our data dashboard so that we can continue to make good academic and operational decisions based on the right metrics and then indicators for success. So those are my three goals. What we've done traditionally, unless you instruct me to do something differently is I, uh, work on these in the middle of the year. I do a, uh, mid-year check-in with you. Um, and I give you sort of an update of what's been done so far, what I'm working on, what needs more attention. And then at the end of the year, just like you all participated in this year, I'll give you my end of the year reflection on these goals. And then we'll go through the whole evaluation process, just like we did last year. So I'll take any feedback and if somebody wants to give me feedback offline, I'm happy to take it that way as well.
Thank you. Any comments or questions superintendent? Member Jack Boni.
I am so happy to finally see, uh, career and prep, uh, career and tech programs being a priority to promote them. Uh, just out of curiosity, I know we have a radio station. Will you be using that as well?
It's, I'm so glad you said that. So something that we've been working on this year is we added two classes, um, at the high school level. One is a radio station class. It's a broadcasting class. And the other class is a production class, which has to do with a video production. And so what we're trying to do is build out, which will hopefully become a communications pathway. So up to this point, all we've really had is a, a radio club for the last few years. And it's, you know, a few interested students, a teacher, and they, you know, go to the radio station, you know, usually after school hours and, and, and the rest of the time it's pre-programmed. And the radio just plays and, you know, the music is shuffled. But building out the broadcasting program is going to allow us to do other things. So I can envision maybe this year, maybe not this year. You know, opportunities for the principal to do a piece or the superintendent to do a piece or kids to do a report on something that they observed. It doesn't have to be just like a radio show in a traditional format. It could be a podcast format. It could be a live production or a performance format. There's so much flexibility and opportunity with the radio station. So I think, um, the, the signal is strong enough to get all the way through town. Uh, we just got to get people used to listening to it again and then start using, uh, the talents of the staff and students to program it in a way that, you know, it, it really teaches the kids about communication, but also fills that gap in, in the community and in terms of knowing what's going on in the schools.
Any other comments or questions? Member Carlo.
Um, I'm really happy to see, um, the increased community engagement. Um, one thing getting on the school committee was because I, there was a lot of parents that were in my, I guess, small circle, we'll say that felt like their voices weren't heard or they didn't know how those voices were to be heard or there's a lot of keyboard warriors out there that I feel like if they could have their voice heard in a much calmer community man- manner, um, we'd be a better community. Um, when I went to school here, I felt like the parents were much closer. The community was much more of a thicker community. Um, people leaned on each other better. I feel like we're kind of at a crossroads of odds of um, complaining more than doing what's best for our kids. Um, so I'm really happy to see that your, um, perspective is going to be widened and increase in, you know, inviting parents in, um, and letting their voice be heard. Um, good or bad, you know, I mean, these, these kids are our future. Um, and the, you know, what will be someday. So I'm really happy to see that. I think it'd be really important for parents, even if it's something so small. Um, just to feel like they have a voice in their kid's future.
And, and just to, uh, kind of give you an example of that. Um, even in the last week or two, uh, I don't go on Facebook a lot and a lot of what you were talking about in terms of like what, what Coventry in the world feels like right now has to do with social media. It, it divides people instead of bringing people together. Um, and the fact that people can sometimes comment on things anonymously makes it worse. But just this last week, somebody made a comment on social media, uh, about the school department. We actually reached out to that person and we called them to find out what, what the problem was. And if there was something else that we could do for them because uh, what they had communicated out on social media didn't necessarily match up exactly with what we had record of. And we wanted to make sure that there wasn't a missing piece or that something further wasn't needed or necessary. Um, and then actually, uh, somebody had commented on a, on a comment, on a, on a post. We contacted that person and said, you know, we, in your comment, you said these five things, but we don't have record of those five things. Is it because, um, we missed the ball someplace? Is it because, you know, what you reported and what we have record of don't match up? Like, we, we are going to try to do a better job of engaging people because I think when people post things on social media and there's no opportunity to circle back with them to find out what the root of the problem is, um, they're not being heard by us. They're being heard by everybody else, but not by us. And giving somebody an opportunity to actually have a conversation with a person on the phone. I know Jackie talked to one person. I, um, emailed with another, another person. I think that gives them a sense of like, at least I got to speak to somebody versus just putting it out there for, you know, the world to see and maybe comment on. And, and the other thing is when, when people do that, they don't have the whole story, the people who comment. And so the, the story grows and changes. And sometimes the, it goes in directions that are not even close to what is actually going on in the schools.
Um, to follow up on that, I came to you with an issue. Um, a parent reached out to me in district four. Um, completely frustrated, completely felt like she was, wasn't being heard. She didn't know where to turn to. And Don, you handled that with grace. Um, and it was resolved and it was resolved in a positive manner. So to let everyone know when, when I came to you and when parents came to me, it worked out really well. So I want to say thank you.
Yeah, yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you. I, I, I'm glad you gave me the opportunity to handle it because sometimes I don't get that. You know, somebody upset, is upset, but I, we never get the chance to make it right. And when given the chance, and I'm glad you're giving me good feedback, uh, because it's not just me, it's the whole team. When given the chance to fix something, we want to fix it because we want, you know, it's like customer service, right? We want people to feel that if there's something going on that needs to be addressed, that we're going to address it. And we're not in the business of ignoring things. We're not in the business of pretending something's not happening. We just need the opportunity to respond. Sometimes we're just not given the chance. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Member Ride L.
Don, thank you and your team for working to protect the integrity of the district, uh, during what, you know, you speaking, it just hit me. Um, so thank you.
Any other comments or questions? I'll just say thank you for putting the goals together. Um, it was, it was when I felt it was an important exercise we go through every year to just identify things we can work towards to improve the district. And also we want to support our superintendent and help his own personal and professional growth as well. Um, so it's an important exercise to have this communication with the school committee and, and really understand what, uh, you know, what's on in store for the next upcoming year. Um, so thank you for putting this together. Uh, I know you put a lot of time and thought into this. It's not something that, that you just do on the fly. So, uh, appreciate the effort. And that said, uh, is there a motion? I think we're approving the goals. Oh, it's just discussion. Never mind. Nope. It's on the agenda for a vote. So thank you for the presentation. Next item on the agenda is strategic plan update for discussion.
Um, so, um, this is something that Amy and I have moved from one agenda to another for like three meetings because we've been so busy with so many different things and the data that Amy has put together here is, is, is happening and being collected in, in, in a, in real time, as they say. And so, um, this is something that the community has asked for. We know the committee looks forward to it. It's, it's, it's the basis for who we are and how we improve. It's actually funny that it comes after my presentation because a lot of what I do in terms of my own personal goals are in a way directly and indirectly connected to the strategic plan. So, uh, Amy put a lot of work into this. Thank you, Amy, so much. And I'm just going to turn it over to you to present to the committee.
Great. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. So tonight my strategic, um, update is, uh, comprehensive. However, in January I did do an update, uh, around some of the academic um, goals that we had. So you might see me, uh, go a little bit faster through some of the academic pieces because I did do that in January. The strategic plan is, um, and as principals can tell you, because they have to build school improvement off of it, is really hard because data comes out at all different times. So academic data comes out at one time. Uh, the surveys from parents come out at another time. And things don't always match up really nice and tidy when you're putting things, uh, together for the next year or planning. So I just want to let you know, there's some parts that I'll spend a little bit more time on because I've done some of these updates, uh, back in January. So, uh, the first is I'm going to review the strategic plan and the goals in it. Update our progress towards those goals. I'm going to review the needs assessment that's been put together from 2425. And then an update on action statements and feedback from stakeholders that I'd like to gather. And then take any of your questions. So just a, a quick understanding, there's an alignment between all three of these plans. Ride has a strategic plan, which our LEA means local advisory, um, local educational agency, which is Coventry. So Coventry puts a strategic plan together. We chose to go with a five-year plan versus a three-year plan. And then schools build, um, their school improvement plans yearly. So there's kind of a, 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 a moving between all three of those plans, uh, all throughout the entire year, making sure our plan aligns with Ride and the school's plans, uh, ride with, um, align with ours and back and forth all year. That's why that arrow is there. Next slide. So our strategic plan has, uh, three priority areas right now. Uh, excellence in teaching and learning, student support and services, and then a community that's engaged and has, is engaged and has responsible citizens, including our student body, right? So those are the three key areas of our, um, strategic plan. Next. Of course, we work in lots of other things, um, lots of other areas, but these are the real focus areas. So now I'm going to talk about the goals in all. So now I'm going to talk about the goals in all those three priority areas. The first one, under the excellence in teaching and learning, we have three goals. I'm going to summarize here for you and then go over the progress in those goals. The goals exist right there. You can see them that we have. One is in ELA, about increasing achievement. One is in increasing achievement in math, and the other one is in science. What I don't have up here for you, but if you were to dig into the strategic plan, is all of the action steps, that first the initiatives and then the action steps under each of those initiatives. So I won't be able to go into all of those because there's many. But this is the overarching goal around ELA. And currently, right now, we're at forty-five point one percent proficient in ELA across our district using state testing. And their change is a plus change. All of the green shows a plus change, moving in the right direction towards our ultimate goal, which you can see over there for twenty-seven, twenty-eight. Goal two is around math. And again, we have a change there, one point six. Again, my eyes are not as great as they used to be, and this is small here for me. Elementary had a huge change in math. And then the middle school had a good change also that which has really pushed us into the proficient range. And then finally, in science, and these are things that I went over back in January. Finally, in science, we have forty-two point eight percent proficient right now, which is an increase of roughly seven percent in in the academic areas. So this is one that I'm moving the fastest on. The next slide is our goals in the student supports and services. And just a quick overview about this section. These are the supports and services that we have for all students that might need it in, for example, maybe a particular subgroup. And one of the areas in the subgroup that we focus, one subgroup we focus on is economically disadvantaged students. How do they perform relative to students that are not economically disadvantaged? Or students with disability? How do they perform versus students without disabilities? And so we are looking for basically disproportionality in achievement. And again, we see it particularly in those two areas where students are economically disadvantaged or they have disabilities. So these goals up here in this area have to do with really addressing students in those two subgroups, economically disadvantaged and students with disability. And we have seen some closing of the gap between them in English language arts, but in math, we have not. So this will be certainly a focus for us. And you can see those areas are in red. This will be a focus for us in the future about how do we close those gaps for students that are economically disadvantaged or have a disability so that they are closer to their peers who aren't in either one of those two subgroups? Next goal, set of goals falls in the community of engaged and responsible citizens. And there are three areas under this particular section. One is in attendance. The next one is in students' ability to remain calm in stressful situations, a social emotional learning area. And then finally, parent engagement. And in the first goal around attendance, we had a five percent increase in students attending school regularly versus being in that category of chronically absent, which is great. Our second goal is around the the piece I told you about, their ability, students' ability to remain calm. So teachers report on the survey works. Forty-six percent of them reported that their students either frequently or almost always can remain calm in challenging situations. And that is an increase again of from the previous survey that we had last year. And then finally, our final goal there is parent engagement, which increased fifteen percent from the last survey that we took. And that's have you as a parent attended an event or a meeting in the past year? And those numbers also increased fifteen percent. So overall, and our goals on the strategic plan, which, by the way, sounds so simple by the way these goals are written, but the action steps, which we'll talk about in a second, are much more complex. But the goals in general are all moving in the right direction, with the exception of the math goal, which we'll spend some time really focusing on why that is. So the next part here is part of planning year after year, both at a school level and at a district level, is conducting a needs assessment. And so starting when the state's testing comes out and different surveys come out, we start to look at that data. And there's three areas that identified in the last needs assessment that I did. And the first one is in the academic areas. And again, it's kind of re repeating to you right now that I am, we do need to really focus on our students that are economically disadvantaged and those with disabilities. Their proficiency rate needs to improve. We still have a substantial gap between students without those areas or those focus groups and and these particular students. And then in attendance, another new piece that came out that despite the district-wide gains in chronic absenteeism, again, our students that are economically disadvantaged, which means they qualify for free and reduced lunch, which is forty-one percent of our students in schools right now, even though there's a forty-one percent of them qualify for free and reduced lunch, sixty-three point five percent of the students that are on free and reduced lunch are in the chronically absent population. So that means that does have some kind of a correlation. If you are in a free and reduced lunch, we do see students missing school more often. And the same thing with students with disability. They make up about eighteen percent of our student body. However, they represent twenty-four point seven percent of the chronically absent students. So you can see again that disproportionality. The next page is around conduct and what my needs assessment showed me in the conduct area. So I pulled up conduct to kind of monitor this because we have recently transferred over, elementary and middle did it two years ago. High school did it last year, to a new way that we are collecting data around students that have any type of a conduct issue. We use a new system and we separate them into teacher-managed behaviors and office referrals. So a a simple way to say it is minor behaviors and collecting that information versus a more major behaviors. And so we are able now to really separate that data and analyze it across schools and over years in a really effective way. Just to kind of update you about an office referral, and this is all in our handbook right now. It's really, an office referral is a formal process where that behavior is documented on the student's record. The student does face some type of a consequence, whether it's a meeting with administrators, parent involvement, or some type of a disciplinary action. And then the goal of the office referral is really to address those severe and repeated behaviors that are beyond really the scope of a regular classroom and really to ensure the safety and the well-being of our entire school community. So you want to address those behaviors, be proactive, but we also want to keep kids in class, right? Because if students aren't in class because of behavior issues, they're not being educated. And so we want to find ways to be proactive and address some of those behaviors before they become significant. The good news is, is that our overall rate of out-of-school suspension is is dropping and also in-school suspension. And so there's been a decrease in these numbers for students that have had some significant behaviors for missing class, which can be a couple of different things. We could be handling them in a different way other than keeping them out of class because, of course, you know, that causes more issues out of class, losing time in instruction, fall further behind, it becomes frustrating. Or it could be a decrease in the amount of disruptive behaviors that need an office referral. The next slide actually details for you the change in out-of-school suspension. So there isn't a huge drop in out-of-school suspension at the high school, but at the middle school, you can see almost by half where they've cut out-of-school suspension. It's a significant drop. Elementary really doesn't have an out-of-school or an in-school suspension. It's in their handbook, but it's used rarely at the elementary level. So we don't count those into our actual data. In-school suspensions, Coventry High School has had a significant drop in in-school suspensions over the past year and also the middle school, which is great. So the needs assessment that we take really helps us to reprioritize and add new action steps. So right now, I'd like to, if you don't mind, go over some of the completed action steps that has been in our plan for the past two years and then what our next steps are. So I'm not going to review all of each one of these. I'm just going to highlight a few, but these are part of the action steps that exist right now underneath the student support services. And so if you'll take a look at number two on here, provide professional development for teachers on using data, designing instructional paths and differentiation specifically for Title I schools by an instructional coach, which was what Carrie's job was. One of the things that we put in place was a new assessment platform three times a year for teachers to be able to track students' academics and then to be able to put them either into interventions or for the teacher to provide differentiation. So a lot of the training in the past year or two has been around how to use this platform successfully in the classroom by our instructional coaches. So that's where there's green check marks there. And then one that's coming up very soon, which I'm going to quickly show you up on the screen, is a rollout of EduClima. We've already rolled it out to interventionists and some of our leadership team. Now it's time to roll it out to our MTSS, which is our multi-tiered system of support staff, and also our our regular educators on how to access data easily and plan for K to twelve instruction. So we're doing that this year, so I thought I'd highlight it for you. To push. So the name of this platform that we're introducing over the past two years in Coventry. Just so you know, you won't be able to see any student names in this data. I have a way to protect it, so you can't see it. So this is the actual dashboard that a teacher has. And by the way, this would have students' pictures on here. And this would be filled with all different kinds of data and whatnot for every educator or administrator that opens it up to see. So it's the easiest way for me to describe this to you is it's a data warehouse. All data we have relative to students funnels into this platform for us. So state data, the iReady data that I told you that we do three times a year, that's academic data, behavior data, SEL data, attendance data. Everything is in a one-stop shopping now for our educators so that they can do plans, work with stu, work on with, together as a team, looking at data at a grade level, or building principles can work with their staff at looking at school-wide data. So I'm going to actually ask Jim if he can click on District here. And then I'm going to have you change it to Last Year, twenty-four, twenty-five school year. So we're going to use Washington Oak. And I'm going to ask you to click on Assessment Suite and find iReady. When you scroll down, Jim, all of these things are things that teachers have access to, all of these different assessments or data kind of platforms that will pull up data. You can click on iReady and hit search. And it's going to pull Washington Oak's data, and I click on that arrow, make it big for you. So this is actually right here, all of the iReady data for Washington Oak for last year. Now, you can't read down here on the bottom, but the first three bars are kindergarten and then first grade, second grade, so on and so on. This is their entire school. So you can quickly see here, this is the fall screening, the winter and the spring for kindergarten. Yellow means they're approaching, green meaning they're right where they need to be, and then red being they're significantly below where they need to be. It's probably closer to one and a half to two years below grade level. So as you can see, this is kindergarten. So you can see, the good news is, is the green bar gets bigger. That's what you want to see. So this is kindergarten, and again, first grade, second grade. So we can, we can see this progress. And this is a very high-level one, right? Teachers will see their class data. Principals will be able to see a teacher data or a grade level data. And you don't just see, this is in ELA. You can also, you can X out of that gem in that corner, out of the, just out of that one, yep. And then you can hit, you can see that same thing. I can click and do it for math. I'm not going to pull it all up, but I can see math data as a, as a, an administrator at the district level. Going one more, connect out of that. You can click, this is behavior, our behavior incidents all funnel in here. So Paula, as the principal, can see how many minors, majors, where it's happening, what what day of the week the most behaviors are happening on. And then attendance data, if we could take a look at that. And then when you go to attendance data, can't you go to grade right here? There it is. Yep. So attendance data by grade level. You can see kindergarten had the weakest attendance at Washington Oak. This grade here, fourth grade had the best. If you could just toggle over that, it tells you that they have a ninety-five point three attendance rate, which is fantastic, right? So you can see all of that data. You can go by weekday. So at Washington Oak, at Washington Oak, Thursday is the best day. And it looks like Wednesday and Friday are the two days that a lot of students are absent. So you can kind of track and and really be proactive in that area. You can go by month. So you can see January is there. So Paula can, in December, let parents know. Seems like January seems to be it. Is it, you know, do we need to wash our hands more? Or is it people are taking vacations? Who knows what that is? And then gender, hit that one there. So does Paula have an issue with males and females? Toggle over the M, sees males, attendance rate is ninety-four point six three. Not really a big deal, ninety-four point eight one at that school. But you can see how that might be at like, for example, at a middle school or a high school, they can look at and see what particular class is it a, a particular group of students that are always absent, and they could target and intervene right there. And this data exists for every school, the whole district, and it's really, you know, what I call a data warehouse, a place for us to do it. What also sits in here, in the past, if a student, you know how you were talking about transitions from fifth to sixth are really tough? Sometimes it's challenging because even like the information about elementary school doesn't always get to the middle school because there's, you know, three hundred and something students moving from there to the to the sixth grade. Intervention plans, students that have had reading services. Sometimes those sat as in paper or in a Google Doc or somewhere. Now all the intervention plans sit in this platform and we can see which interventions across our district have been effective. We want to keep repeating those and which interventions really, whether it's attendance or behavior or academic, which ones have been, you know, not so successful.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
So will, if like, I'll use my daughter for example. In sixth grade, they wanted to look at her iReady from fifth and fourth, and they couldn't really find, you know, the, easily. It had to be, you know, so now will this follow her, her entire academic, okay?
Yep, their entire career will be in this, in this warehouse now. Every assessment, state assessments, all of it.
So K through twelve?
K through twelve.
That's great.
Actually, we're trying to get pre-K, some pre-K things in here now, too.
That's great.
Right, some of the work that we're doing. And that's on that particular action step there, which was the rollout of EduC. And that's on that particular action step there, which was the rollout of EduClima. You could go to the next slide. So these are the action steps that exist underneath a particular initiative that we're working on that has to do with helping students with disability, DAS is differently abled students. How do we help to target instruction for them? And so you can see some of the goals there that we have created or some of the action steps in order to help them reach their goal. Next slide. Something that school committee has been really actively involved in is helping develop a policy around attendance. So those are some of our action steps that are on here. And you can see what's next on here by the date on there is research best practices now to support students with chronic attendance issues and create a district-wide attendance team that reviews data and these best practices and sends those out and, and across our district. And then the next slide. If you look at number four on here, it says, collect consistent behavior data across the district. I told you about that system that we implemented over the past couple of years and you can see totally complete by 2024 in the elementary and then we moved it in middle school and then we moved it to the high school. The high school has fully implemented it. You know, again, anything that's new is sometimes hard for people to grab on to, but I think now if you were to ask the high school, they wouldn't give it up because it's a nice, easy way to see student behavior data across their school. So next, we're going to train teachers on some social emotional learning strategies for them to work on in their classrooms and implement that in September in a new program that we have in K to eight that starts in September. And then the final slide here about action steps, and again, this is just a taste of them, is the schools review, SurveyWorks data, you saw that. But even on the bottom there, surveying families, I'm sorry, do you mind if we go one back, Jim? Yeah, surveying families for types of events that they believe they will benefit from and that they'll be connected to the schools. We think that's our next step. And then starting to do some of that planning. How do we make that happen? So you can see the dates there and we hope to accomplish some of those things. So our next steps is we're meeting with ad staff at retreat on August 4th. And then I think we also do it again on the 13th, Don, right? And we'll spend some time talking about these things at our admin. But then I also want to bring in some stakeholders like parents and teachers and have them help me add and build on the action steps that we already have and then inform and put it out to the community again, so they know what of are the priorities and the things that we're working on across the district. That's really all I have for you. I hope it wasn't too long. I tried to take something that's a lot of work and very complicated and make it succinct for you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from members of the committee? Member Dos Reis Kuta.
I think this is amazing. It's tremendous. I love that we're collecting all this data. My question is, so thank you for this. I think it's much needed. It's a wonderful tool, but my question is, when we start really using this, how do you see, when will we see the information?
Yeah.
Year one, year two, so that we can use it to kind of create the impact that we're looking to do? Does that make sense?
It definitely does. You know, I think one of the most frustrating things is, is a lot of things happening, right? I didn't even talk about the academic piece, about the new curriculum and training teachers and professional development. Like that's all part of the, even the academic piece. When is this all going to come together? You know, we are doing these things, we're collecting data, putting more action steps, steps, you know, real change takes three to five years and to see the, the true impact of something. And I, I do believe that there's so much change and there's so many wheels turning in, at the same time that sometimes we, and I'm sure principals feel this way, people feel like, oh my gosh, how much more can we actually take? But I will say, Don always says, standing still is like going backwards to him. We have to keep moving forward, even though people are, you know, sometimes resistant to change and sometimes are thinking like it's too much. I don't think that we should just be good or put things in place. I think our goal should always be great and just keep working towards it. So that that platform, it is already making a difference for interventions because now the kids that are moving from fifth to sixth, the teachers in fifth grade put those interventions in there for reading and math. Those sixth grade teachers next year can see what those interventions were. The eighth grade teachers who did interventions in math and, and reading, they're going up to the high school, those freshmen, interventionists are going to be able to see, or those teachers are going to be able to see what they did in middle school and what worked and how they did in those interventions. Our attendance plans are, that we are putting together are being inserted and uploaded into this platform that use smart forms, so we can create them right in there. There's some other work that we're doing around really prioritizing the kinds of things that kids who are struggling learn, instead of making it really, really wide and do too many things, just focusing on critical areas for those students. And those are going to be inside EduClima so that teachers year after year can say, and they were in, they were in third grade, but they were focusing still on some first grade targets. What did they complete? And what do they need to work on next? So it's not like reinventing the wheel every year. So you have a great question. My answer is it's making some difference now. I see it making huge differences as time goes on.
Great. And then the other question is, of all these goals, what would you say that are the two critical goals? I mean, I see what they are, but I'd like your perspective on what.
Yeah. I think one of the conversations we're going to have at the admin retreat is, we know, you know, kids who are economically disadvantaged, some kids, right? Are kiddos that it doesn't mean that they can't learn at the same rate as everybody else. It's that we need to make sure we give them all the experiences and the support they need. And so, and sometimes that support is support to help them get to school. Sometimes that support is maybe it's making sure they have food. Sometimes that support might be that they are getting an additional dose of, of reading support. It, there's all different kinds of support that they might need. I think a focus in our schools of really identifying a core group of kids that we want, that are, might be disadvantaged in a particular area or have a disability and making sure that we target those kids for a period of time and see if the impact we can make. Sometimes it seems really large. If you think about it, almost half of our kids are economically disadvantaged. We are going to have a hard time making sure that we figure out what all 41% of those students need, but we need to start somewhere and target groups of kids and put best practice in place for those kids and make sure we're making a difference. So I'd say that's a focus area for sure. The second, which sounds silly around this because we didn't really talk about it very much, but teacher support and professional development, I think is huge because they are the most important resource that we have. There is nothing more important than a teacher, what they do in the classroom every day. And so whether it's support managing challenging behaviors or whether it's support on learning the curriculum and implementing it with integrity or whether it's support, you know, if they're having a difficult time managing the, or juggling the day-to-day kind of, of classrooms because they sometimes are tough. I think focusing on teachers, professional development and support is, is crucial to affecting how things happen with kids.
Thank you. Completely agree. Thank you so much.
Any other comments or questions? Member Mayer.
Just a quick question. Is it, is it fair to say that, I know a few years ago, we approved a number of new curriculums in a lot of grades and is it fair to say that now that they've been in place for a few years and the teachers are acclimated to it, that, that's partly responsible for we're seeing a lot of increases in the scores?
Yeah, I think it's always, it's, it's interesting because you have different cohorts of kids, right? Who come through, you know, and so sometimes you have a really strong, so I don't want to like totally say it's right now just the, the new curriculums that we've put in place because I do think it takes a while for those to take place. And there's different cohorts of kids. So sometimes you have a really strong cohort of students and that can, in a particular school at one time, make it look like, you know, they've made a ton of progress and ELA. I think what we want to see is consistent progress in all schools and not just little jumps in our district. So we want all schools to be making growth and not just cohorts of kids. So I do think it's making a difference, but I do think it takes a while for schools and teachers and families and kids to all feel comfortable with new curriculum. But I do think the level of instruction has definitely improved. I enjoy seeing things happening in the classroom right now.
Member Carlo.
I like the district will survey families of types of events they believe will benefit and connect them to the schools. I'm going to be completely honest, there's a lot of things that come home and I'm like, what does that mean? And in order to support kids at home, I feel like when the parents understand what's going on during their day, when they come home, the support continues. And the best way to do that is to involve parents and get them to what does ELA stand for? What is ELA plus and what is the difference?
Yeah, that makes sense.
And that was a big struggle for me, like, how do I support her at home and how to, you know, how do I, if I'm the only one that doesn't know this, is there other people out there? So I think that's a huge thing and I'm really happy to see that because again, I mean, I think the attendance and the conduct and, you know, the learning disabilities, the struggle at home is where it kind of begins. So getting parents to understand and get involved and want to be a part of their, their school and their future is, is great to see. So I think that'll be huge. I like that.
That's great. I, if I could just give a little kudos to the, the new principal at Ty Oak right now too. She took the home there and surveyed parents immediately and asked them, what do you need information about? What do you need information about, about me? What do you need to know about Ty Oak? Like as I get to know you, what information can I give you to help make that, feed that connection? I was so impressed by her survey. And then she set up coffee chats with parents at night to kind of give back, like, so this was the most answered or asked question. I want to make sure you get an answer to it. So join me at this time for this topic. Join me at this time. And it was quick, 30 minutes of online over the summer so that they don't have to leave, get a babysitter, jump on, listen to the answers, ask questions and then jump off. So I was really impressed by that survey and that plan of how she's doing. I think she calls them maybe coffee chats, something like that at night. So I totally agree. I think it's something that we can do at a district level as well.
Member Redel.
This EduClima tool sounds like an amazing resource for educators. Thank you and all the admin for, you know, pulling all of this plan together and, you know, all the implementation that goes behind it. I am curious, is there a thought, maybe not, or maybe this isn't even a, a function of the data warehouse, if you will, that parents can either access or be a part of or utilize it in some fashion or degree? I'm not sure.
So there isn't a, an opportunity for parents to go on to that particular warehouse because each one would have to have like an individual that they could only go on and see their child. I wouldn't, they couldn't see anybody else. But there are ways for us to use that information to communicate things out to parents. And the iReady platform, which is a, a hope of mine this year, does have a way for parents to go on to iReady and to see their student scores yearly, wherever they take it, and also to see how they are progressing, what are some of the goals and the things that they could work on. So right now we send a paper report home, which we know lots of times they don't get there. We would like it to be an electronic type of a situation where we send something by email that says, this is how you log on and get into it. The issue is, and I just had this problem with a, a first grade parent who wanted to see what was on iReady and I had to provide training to her because the only way she can log on is through her son's email account. Excuse me. That's the only way she can log on. You have to, and when you're at home, a first grader doesn't know how to get to their email from home. So I had to teach her how to add that to her Google accounts, like her son's Google account onto her, in her waffle or whatever. And it ended up, you know, having to have her come in to show her because it is a, it's not an easy situation from home. There is an easier way to do it. It's just going to require some, some gym work. I haven't gotten there yet with them. Yeah.
Any other comments or questions? Member Dos Reis Kuta.
So is this something, it's just thought, I just thought about it. Could this be something that we incorporate in the parent teacher conference where we show the parents the progress? So like you said, not everybody has an email account, not everybody's tech savvy. Some parents just want to see the results. So would this be a great tool, I think, to be able to share that?
A hundred percent. And I do think that, so now, you know, in order for a parent to have a conference, they, they, or the teacher, or they have to request it. There isn't a conference day any longer built into our schedule. And I encourage parents to, once a year, set up a conference with your teachers and go see and get that kind of progress. And I would be shocked if there isn't a, a teacher that isn't using like an opportunity to show iReady or have that conversation. But this new platform will allow them to look at all different kinds of data. Their child's attendance data, their child's, even on the new elementary report card on the very top, it communicates, this is your rate of attendance now. Before we never had that. Now it says with the new report card that we put in place, this is your rate of attendance. And so we want parents to see it every time they get a report card, what their child's rate of attendance is. My goal is eventually to get that at the middle school and the high school too.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? I see none. Thank you very much for the presentation and the updates on our strategic plan. Very informative and, and look forward to further progress. Next item on the agenda is item E, I believe. Finance office reorganization for discussion.
Something I've talked about with the committee a few times, I've probably been talking about it for almost a year, is the composition of our finance office. And so right now, in terms of our, our office, we have a payroll clerk who, whose function is really just to do our payroll, but she has to be supervised by somebody. Then we have accounts payable and accounts receivable, and they're also supervised. In terms of the finance office, in terms of who does the accounting and all the, all the fiscal management of the district, right now it sits with two people. It sits with Chris, who is the finance director, and then it sits with Ming, who was hired as a senior accountant. In the past, for many, many, many years, that office, the one that Chris and Ming are in, had three people. And the function of the office, and this is similar in another district as well, was a finance director, a controller who oversaw all the accounts in the system, and then another accountant, like a staff accountant. And that changed at some point. We had somebody leave and I think it was probably a fiscal situation where there was an adjustment made and a position was eliminated. It happened right before the pandemic. And the pandemic years were a little bit interesting. We had a different finance director. We were trying to get through the budgeting of COVID with, you know, some of the things happening in town with the local appropriations and our budget being frozen and then also with the state aid being adjusted and, and literally reduced as a result of ESAR funds then coming in. And then there was the management of the ESAR funds. And what we realized pretty quickly is that that office was now shorthanded, right? Because the work to handle and manage all of that became very challenging. After the pandemic ended and we were still pretty much at that model, and then our office turned over two or three times. You know, our finance director from prior to the pandemic and into the pandemic left, a new finance director came in, finished the pandemic and then left. And then Chris, who was hired as a deputy finance director, moved up in 24 to be the new finance director. We eliminated the controller position. We eliminated the controller position and filled it with a senior accountant. And then the other staff accountant was left vacant. We have job descriptions for all three of those positions. We have salary ranges for all three of those positions. And what Chris and I and, and some other folks have been talking about quite a bit, is getting that office back up to full capacity. Because I believe some of the challenges we're experiencing are a result of us not being well organized and well positioned in our finance office for people to be doing work within a certain role. And so like typically a finance director is the person who oversees the office, has the vision for the office in terms of where we're going in terms of our budgeting, but also creates systems to do like self auditing, right? What is our current situation with subs? And then doing a data dig into substitute teachers and how many subs have we used year over year? How often are we using them? Which months do we use them the most? Which schools do we use them the most? And, and go through a sort of a self-reflection, I call it audit, where you identify subcategories within your own budgeting system and you start finding ways to address those issues. In our current situation, we don't get to do some of those things because we're constantly working on something else. This year was particularly challenging because we did three audits in one year, which is really unheard of, right? We did the 22, the 23, the 24. So Ming and Chris did three audits in one year. And you, and you would think, oh, good. So you're done. Now you have a break. Actually, we don't. Cause we're already met with the auditor general, municipal finance and the auditing firm. And they're going to start going and collecting information from us this summer in preparation for the audit in the fall. Because the goal is to have 25 done by November, early December, but November. And so we're going to go right into a, a fourth audit. And so, well, what I've been saying at a few different meetings is I'd like to bring the composition of, in, in the, the staffing of that office back up to three. And I have the job description, we have the, the salary ranges in terms of what we've paid in the past. So it doesn't necessarily require a vote. And, and actually we even budgeted for the position in anticipation of, of this happening. So Chris has already built it into the budget. I, I, I felt though it was important to have a conversation with the school committee and, and to answer any potential questions or concerns. Because we're, we're, we're preparing to post that position. And it's, and I, we believe it's going to take some time to get filled. And, and we want to make sure that there are no questions or comments or concerns about us moving forward with that. The only other thing I would say is that's come up a lot this year is we talk about grants quite a bit. You know, there's the regular grants that we get from the state and the federal government. But then there's also other grants that we chase down, whether they're, you know, from different agencies that we work closely with, or maybe even private agencies that do different grant work. We don't have a dedicated grant person, right? A grant writer. But one of the things Chris and I talked about is this third person, this third accountant, besides doing general accounting work like, you know, data entry, journal entries, line transfers, things like that, and taking those things off of Ming and Chris, that person also can be continuously sort of tracking the grants that we have, collecting the data that's necessary in terms of submission at the end of the grant period, but also doing research for other grants that we might be able to get to then offset costs of, of things that typically either we can't afford or come out of the local budget. So we look at this as an opportunity to maybe do two or three different things all at one time. So with that said, I'll, I'll take any questions or comments, but that's what I'm proposing with the finance office.
Member Dos Reis Kuta.
So we've had discussions in the past when you bring up the word audit, right? That I, I like and thought it would be a good idea for us to either self-audit and self-identify issues that could potentially save us from a lot of what we've been dealing with. So I think that adding an additional person, although even though it's baked into the budget. And I know that there's like, why do we need to add another person? But this is another key example of when you have a department that's well-staffed, especially in finance, it is critical to help us do this. So I'm glad that this is coming back. And I would also like to see that this is efficiently done and the roles are well identified. So that we can concentrate on that auditing piece to be able to keep us out of trouble for going forward. Because I truly understand when you have a lot of going on, completing the three digits, being pulled in, three digits, oh my goodness, three audits, being pulled in all different directions. It creates a little bit of chaos, a little bit of anxiousness. And I think then the level of work is not up to par or excellent like we expected it to be.
Right.
So I'm glad that this is.
And we've already moved Ming into more of a controller role. So Ming is doing a higher level work is not, you know, and, and honestly, for the last year and a half, the, the, the two of them have sort of shared all those responsibilities. So Ming in many ways has been doing a lot of the functions of a controller along with Chris. And so I thinking was it would sit with Ming and then some of the things that Ming does and Chris does as well in terms of even just simple data entry, would shift to a third person who could then free up some time to do the things you talked about.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Uh, member Redel.
Don, I'm curious, have you looked at other districts to see the composition of their finance offices and the distribution of their workload, et cetera?
We have. So we've looked at a few different districts. We try to look at districts that are comparable to us in terms of enrollment, population demographics, things of that nature. In the, in the past, typically districts that are our size have more people than we do. But sometimes it's harder to figure out who's got what because they call them different things in different districts. In some districts, for example, you know, you'll have a payroll person, but they might actually sit in HR and another place. They might sit in finance and some places they sit in both. But in general, we, we're typically, you know, in comparison to districts our size, one or two people smaller.
Member Carlo.
I'm glad to hear you talk about the grants because that's what I was going to suggest is I would wholeheartedly support that role being implemented as long as grant writing was part of their job description. My biggest fear is everything that you see and read on the internet about the Department of Education potentially going away and how that will hurt us. And, and to get someone on board ahead of that possible occurrence would be great. I think there's a lot of money out there, you know, being on a PTA, you had to go find it. And I think having that significant role would be a, a big success for Coventry.
And, and, and it would almost, if we were successful in, in, in doing what I'm saying and what you're saying, almost maybe pay for itself or at least half of it. With, if you bring in enough grant in, income, it could almost offset the, the cost of the person.
Any other comments or questions? I just have one comment. So I also support this. I, I have definitely believe our finance department, which is very important, especially considering how things go in this town. Having that properly staffed is, is paramount. The only thing as a school committee will require is, is when and if the position is filled, just updated organizational charge.
Absolutely.
Next item on the agenda, five-year deficit reduction plan for discussion and vote on the agenda.
So, you know, we, we, we're charged to develop a deficit reduction plan in conjunction with the, the town. We haven't completed that task yet because each of us is still working on our five-year projection. The town may be a little bit further ahead of us, but I, I put this on the agenda last week in hope. Actually, I put it on the agenda two weeks ago when I first started this draft of maybe being at a place where we could present it and vote on it, but it's not prepared yet. So I, I'm comfortable saying we'll have to table that. When, when it does come before you though, you will have to vote. Cause it then needs to be voted on by the school, uh, town council and then submitted to the auditor general.
Any questions or comments? All right. Seeing none, moving to five-year budget projection, discussion and vote.
So this, this is actually a little bit different than what I was planning on. So part of what the work, we, part of the work we were doing in preparation for the teacher contract fiscal impact statement was, and we talked about this, I think, last week, seeing how the cost of the, the contract sat inside of the five-year projection. And, and what we discovered is it's an actually, it's a very interesting process because the five-year projection is supposed to be, as far as I understand, a tool that you use to forecast what you believe your bills could be in future years, right? And it's a good exercise to go through because if you are thinking about your finances and you're looking at what your revenue might be, and you're looking at what your expenses might be, you can see where you might have a shortfall. You can see where you might have a surplus. You may see where you are even. I think what we've done here a little bit is made the five-year projection more of like a five-year budget. And in trying to build the teacher fiscal impact statement and then include it in the five-year projection, we found that there are some challenges. And so I want to talk a little bit about those challenges and then kind of talk about how we're going to move forward with it. So I'll just give you a few different examples. When we did our first projection, and this was the way that the auditor general asked us to do it back in December, we actually calculated no increase from the town. We, we've calculated zero from the town. And then we did our budget and at the end of each year, we showed what our deficit would be, where our shortfall would be. And then we worked with the town. This was probably the, been the most productive year we've had. We worked with the town and we really just focused on 26. We didn't focus on every year. But on 26, we said, you know, this is what we see our shortfall being. The town said, this is what we believe we can give you. And we were able to come up with a balanced budget pretty quickly, right? And it was passed by the town and the school and there really wasn't a lot of pomp and circumstance of hullabaloo. It was a clean, fast budget. That amount that we got from the town has, for 26, has basically been sort of calculated out now for the next five years as being the amount we're going to get. And so instead of starting the five-year projection with all zeros, saying we're going to get nothing, what they said is the amount that you got this year for 26, we're just going to run that amount out as sort of like, you know, your local appropriations. And, and then obviously there are other things, right? There's, you know, state aid and there's Medicaid and there's other revenue sources. And then we look at each year and we look at, you know, what each year looks like afterwards. But here are some of the challenges that happen when you try to use the five-year projection like a five-year budget. In 26, we know exactly who our staff is right now. We, we know who's there. We know what step they're on. We know if they have longevity or not. They know what, we know what kind of family plan they have in terms of insurance. We know everything about them because it's, it's, it's in real time. When you say, okay, so what's your staffing going to look like next year? Or we can really say is it might look exactly the same as it looks this year, but it probably won't. But we can say that. So when we look at a projection, we're taking the 26 number and just moving it over to 27 and saying, this is the cost of our staff if you just take all the people we have today and roll them up. And then for 28, we take all the people we have and roll them up. And we take all the people we have and roll them up for 29 and all the people we have and roll them up for 30. Well, that's good for the exercise of creating a projection. It's not great for the exercise of creating a budget. And that's where we've been struggling a little bit. So here are some things that change year over year. Medical, dental and prescription costs, right? So Chris can budget in seven and a half percent increase every year and say, our prescription drug and dental is going to go up by seven and a half every year. It could go up by 10. It could go up by three. It could go up by five. We don't know. But we are going to project that it's going to go up by seven and a half every year. And so when we calculate that number, that cost to us, it's a, it's a flat cost based on what we think might happen. But it's not what we know to have happening. It's what we think. Pension numbers change based on who's retiring and who's in the system and how much they get paid. So pension numbers change in terms of what we contribute to the pension system. Our utility costs change, right? You can have a year where it's bone cold and you have a ton of snow and you can have another year where it's warm and you don't have a lot of snow and utility costs can change. Workman's compensation changes, right? You could have kids, you can have adults who have very few injuries and our workman's comp costs are very low. And you can have another year where workman's comp's high. But the problem is when you do a projection, all you're doing is saying, here's what we know workman's comp is today. Let's just multiply it out by a certain percentage every single year and we'll use that as our, our compensation, our, our projection. Purge of services. We don't know how many special ed kids are going to be in out-of-district placements next year. We don't know how many are going to be in out-of-district places, placements in 2029. We don't know how many kids are going to go to CTE programs in 29. We hope it's a lot less than now, right? We hope more kids stay, but we don't know that number. So we're just taking what we know and moving it along. We don't know what overtime's going to look like, right? We want it to be less, but we don't know because overtime is often connected to snow removal, right? We have a bunch of a snow removal, but people who clear snow are working overtime. And so that's something else. Subs, we don't know how many, how much we're going to spend on subs. So that's, that's not everything. It's just an example. So I didn't share the five-year projection with you today because when Chris and I went through that process, 25 obviously is done, looked good. 26 is the actual budget we're in, looks good. When we looked at 27, we said, oh, we, it needs some adjusting. If all the things that we have in there are, as I just described, we're going to have to adjust it. And then you adjust 27, then it impacts 28 and then you might have to adjust 28, which impacts 29. So the reason why I'm going through this long-winded, you know, sort of description is we're, I could give you the projection today and it would show you some shortfalls in some years. I'd like to have an opportunity to work with Chris and with Amy to address some of those, to see if we can redo the budget in some of those places to make some adjustments based on some of the things I talked about and, and, and how we budgeted. But the reality is every, every year, we're going to do a new five-year projection, every single year. Except every year it's going to go out by one more year. And every year it's going to require another adjustment. And it may require like three adjustments depending on where we are in the year. So it's not a five-year budget. Cause if it's a five-year budget, that means we're never getting any more money than we think we're getting today. And our expenses are always going to be exactly the same and only go up by a certain percentage. It's a five-year projection. One of the things the town asked for is how does the teacher's contract fit into your five-year projection? We, we've put it into the five-year projection, but then as we put it in, we said, there are places we want to make other adjustments so that we can start seeing how it impacts year over year. If, if you looked at just teacher compensation, I didn't do SRP. And you just said, you know, how much more is 27 over 26? It's a $775,000 increase in just teacher compensation. I'm not talking about health and dental and pension or any of that. I'm just saying like compensation. If you look at what the difference is from 27, 28, it's a million 46. If you look at 28 to 29, it's 981. That's the impact of like the, the raise on just the compensation. But the reality is you have to include all those other things. And, and, and you have to be prepared to adjust those things as you move through this projection process. So we're, we're going to come forward with it and we're going to present it. And we'll give you a better idea of where we think we're at. Not only, we know where we're at this year, but what 27 and 28 and 29 would look like. But I wanted to give you sort of a, an explanation of why I'm not presenting it today as it is because I think it requires more work. But it requires work because it's, it's actually doing exactly what it's intended to do. A projection is, is intended for you to be able to see where your budget is and could be in the, in the following years and where you may or may not need to make adjustments.
I'd like to add to that before I go to questions, just to reemphasize a couple of points here. In the budgeting process, it, it's working as planned. In our meetings with the Department of Municipal Finance and the Auditor General, we had a very frank conversation about five-year projections and, and what it's supposed to accomplish. And what it's supposed to accomplish is we produce our five-year projection. And this year should already be covered. And as Superintendent Coward pointed out, 2026 is right where we expected it to be. So when we have a conversation with the town council coming up, starting in December and through the budget season, our five, our projection for 2026 is right, right as it is expected and it should make the budgeting conversation very easy. Where things start to differ is in 2027. So we can start to have the 2027 conversations this year. So we're not, we're not having discussions with the council or, or amongst ourselves, or the school department amongst themselves about 2026 because they already know what to expect. There are some conversations, but the real planning comes a year ahead now. And this is the, the benefit of a five-year projection is you can start planning year, a year or more ahead. You can see that maybe in 2020- You can see that maybe in 2027, if there's a shortfall in revenue of what we expected, what can we do in the school department side? What can we do working with the town to have that conversation? And that's what the projection is intended to do. It's to start sparking productive conversations between the two public bodies and the two departments, you know, the town and the school department. And really be able to plan ahead, something that really up until very recently, and I was very happy this past December when we had the meeting, up until very recently, we were never able to do that. We are always reacting, not thinking proactively ahead. So the five-year planning projection and putting that together is really having a positive impact. And that's what we have to do for a takeaway. And if it's not ready to present to us and to approve yet, that's fine. I'd rather have something on the table that really reflects what we think we want to present to the town. That said, off my soapbox, any comments or questions from members of the committee? Member Mayor.
So tell me if I'm wrong. You're not necessarily going over this because we see any major shortfalls. We're just doing it to try to be as accurate as possible moving forward.
So even if we were doing anything with salary, nothing. The 26 budget has changed from what we projected it would be in December. It changed because we have new positions, we have retirements, we have things have changed. So the 26 has changed. So we did the five-year in December. We did it again in March. Now we're doing it in June. Every single one of those times it's changed. So even if we weren't doing salaries, it's changed. And when the 26 changes, it changes every year after that. And so what we've, and this is separate apart from the salaries for the contracts, just looking at what 26 looks like is driving 27. And so what we wanted to do is what I was hoping to do tonight is be able to say to you, here's the five-year projection, here's all the salaries, here's everything in it, here's how each year works out. But the reality is, is as we start looking at year-over-year changes, there are some things that need to be adjusted or it's not going to work out and they're compounded year over year. So if you don't make the adjustment in 26 or 27, it doesn't just double, it could quadruple by the time you get to, you know, 30 years out. So it wasn't necessarily about like, we saw something that was, this is like, you know, a big problem as much as like, we need more time to kind of work it out. If it becomes a problem, you're going to hear about it. You have to hear about it. You're responsible for it. But I think it still needs more work before we present it. And I just didn't feel good about presenting something that we thought needed more work. It just is not good for you. It's not good for us. It's not good for the community. I'd rather adjust it. And then if we bring it to you and we say, well, in the projection process, we identified that we're going to have a big hole in our budget in 28, and this is why we think it, then we can talk about that.
Member Dos Reis Cuto.
So projections are hypothetical. So in this hypothetical or forecasting, how are we thinking of anything that we could potentially move some kind of monies to a an account that we could say these upper contingencies? Almost like what ifs, you know, like the well went, right? Or the septic went. Kind of like looking ahead to say, even though we don't know what's going to happen, do we have a reserve to say, can we do that? Does it incorporate that as well? Or could it?
It doesn't, but it absolutely could. So and this is a whole separate presentation, but I met with Mario Correno, who is the chief operating officer from RIDE. And he talked about reserve accounts and how you set up a reserve account. And one of the things, Chris and I both met with him together. One of the things we did not realize, and this is like I said, a whole separate presentation is separate and apart from building a school or taking a bond for school construction, school departments should be doing stage one and stage two applications every five years. And everything that's on your capital list should be part of your stage one and stage two, because then if you complete them, even if you use impact fees, you can submit for your housing aid reimbursement. If it's not on your stage one or stage two application, you can't get the reimbursement for housing aid. You have to pay the whole thing. So right now, everything that's in our school construction project, the $25 million bond project is in a stage two application. So we're going to get housing aid and all that. But what, I'll give you an example. So the let's say, all right, so the middle school parking lot, we paved it last year was like $100,000. That wasn't part of any stage two application. As far as riders goes, they have not approved that project. So it's a $100,000 project, we pay the full hundred. If it was in a stage two application and approved, you would get your housing aid back. And for us, it's roughly 50%. It's like 49.2%, which gets to the reserve account. So if you do a project and you get funds back, you take that, you put it into a reserve account. It's almost like you get two for one. And then you do another project, either with that money or with different money, you get your housing aid back, it goes into the reserve account. And so what you start doing is putting money into a reserve account as like that account that you use for when you have an emergency problem. And right now, the account that we use when we have emergency problems is really just the impact fees. You know, that's what we've been doing. The other part of it is, let's just think ahead. After the five-year deficit reduction plan is over, the town has already been contributing like 400,000 and change every year as part of their contribution to it. They could decide, I'm not saying they will, because I'm not the town, they could decide we'll take that $400,000, which is not part of your maintenance of effort, right? But we do want to continue helping the schools and they could put that into the reserve account on an annual basis, which now really builds it up fast. And you get your 50% reimbursement on your housing aid. Now your reserve account is really moving along. So communities like Lincoln, communities that have been submitting stage ones and stage two applications. And I say every five years because they're good for five years. So if I submitted one, and this is my plan actually, above and beyond what's on our construction project list, if I submit a stage one, let's say this September, and then I submit a stage two in February when it's due, and I list out all the projects that are on our capital improvement list as being projects that we're going to do, the ones that are not in the bond, then if we do them, we get the housing aid back. The way we're situated right now, we don't get anything back. So that was, that's why it's this whole separate presentation, but that's a way to build up a reserve, which kind of answers your question.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that at some point we look into the future to make sure that we're in a position where we're not always falling short.
It's a great question. What Mr. Coward didn't say is Mario's school community member in Lincoln, and they've built up their reserve fund to millions of dollars, double-digit millions of dollars. I don't have the exact number. In a relatively short amount of time, it's been a very effective way that they can accomplish capital projects and and not let their infrastructure fall apart. Any other comments or questions? All right, seeing none. We'll move on to superintendent report drinking water test results for all district schools.
Yes, so I'm going to put my letter. We had the drinking, we volunteered to have our drinking water tested in all our buildings. And they tested all, not all, but you know, at least, you know, five to 10 locations that have drinking water, like water fountains, you know, bubblers, filling stations, stuff like that.
And so what they did is they tested for lead in all of them. Every one of our schools, schools and every location that they tested came back with great results. And so what I had Jackie do is two things. She scanned to you the different results for each school. I can read each one of them out loud to you, but basically each school has results that are at the lowest range measurable, you know, for drinking water. So, you know, less than one, you know, P P B is like the lowest level. And so the only thing that we're expected to do is just sort of continue with routine prevention and control and that's it. And so one of the things I have also included is a letter. And the letter, you know, the letter could be handled a few different ways. You can have one for each school if the results are all different. But because ours were all the same, I drafted a letter that basically is going to go out to the community and said, you know, all our water, drinking water, receptacles of the schools were tested for lead and the results were, you know, less than one P P B, no lead detected. And just kind of, it's actually a template that they give you. I just filled in our information. And just to notify people of lead water. And so we're in good shape and I just wanted to kind of report and share that information with you.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Member Rideau.
Maybe this is a stupid question. Are you going to share that letter out on Facebook for the community? Well, whoever manages the Coventry Public Schools.
Yeah, it's me. So I could, I typically shares things like this through the listserv, but I can share it in both, the listserv and on our page.
Any other comments or questions? I'll just comment that that's great news that all our schools tested well. Next item on the agenda is citizens' comments. If any citizens gathered here today would like to speak, please come up to the podium, state your first and last name for the record. Seeing no takers in the room, we'll move to Zoom. There are two people on Zoom. If you would like to speak during public comment, please raise your hand and wait to be called on. Going once, twice, three times, and citizens' comments is closed. Next item is scheduling of the next meeting. Is there a motion to schedule the next meeting for August 14?
I make a motion to schedule the next meeting for August 14, 2025 at 6:00 PM at Coventry Public Schools Administration Building.
Second.
All in favor? Chair votes aye. Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero. And is there a motion to adjourn at 8:55 PM?
I'll make a motion to adjourn at 8:55 PM.
Second.
All in favor? Chair votes aye. Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Thank you, everyone.